Lord, bestow upon us your powers of enlightenment. Bestow your gift of understanding. Bestow your gift of good decision-making. Bestow your gift of love and friendliness. Amen.
Amen. Friendly.
Quick call or roll?
Mayor staff.
Here.
Alvin Lincoln.
Here.
Alvin Sahaske.
Here.
Alvin Westen.
Here.
Alvin Tann.
Here.
First item.
Resolved City Court be authorized to re-advertise for public hearing held on December 1st at 7:00 p.m. in the municipal chambers in the municipal building relative to proposed local law which would amend Section C-152-J relative to the rental permit law. Relative to proposed local law which would amend Section 113A, 114A of the city charter relative to the Department of Police Commission.
Call out for that. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Second resolution is for a public hearing on December 1st relative to proposed local law which would amend Section C-152-J relative to the rental permit law.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
The City Court was authorized to re-advertise for a public hearing held this meeting relative to proposed local law by the motion to amend the ordinance. Mayor Stafford will declare a public hearing open.
This will be the third public hearing that we have had on this proposed ordinance. There have been quite a few changes made to it, amendments made to it, since it was first brought up before the council. Anyone wishing to speak on behalf of this matter? Sir? Would you please, please come to the microphone and state your name and address, please.
Eugene Birch, and I've been a business owner in Fulton, New York for 30 years. And my feeling on your opposed situation toward just the rental owners of property is very unfair because start off with, you have a police department, you have a city council here, and we pay taxes, and you are to take care of an individual who has a problem. It's not my job to take care of every tenant and everybody in the city of Fulton. Okay? Start off with, I'm not a judge, and if you want to make me a judge, we'll have some fun. If you want to make me a cop or a law officer, fine, I'll do my job. But I'm not paid to do your job. Okay? And I have no right to do it. I can call the city police and say, "I have somebody who wants to rent an apartment. Have they ever been convicted of anything?" They'll tell me, "You have no right to know that."
You have a right to know that if you get the prospective tenant to sign off.
Wait just a minute. You think somebody is stupid here? Who is going to sign off what?
If they want to rent, if you, if you wanted, if you want to do bad...
Wait a minute, are you talking about, what, where are you talking about these people? I rent, and I have probably some of the nicest tenants, and I do business with some of the nicest people in the whole world. And where you people are coming off with your arrogance and ignorance is completely beyond me. Are you saying that I have a right to go ahead and do some of the things that you're trying to force on me? And then not only that, you're telling me you're going to take my property?
No, we're not going to take your property. Right off.
I'll tell you what, I made a big investment in the city of Fulton many, many years ago. Okay? It was a big mistake, and I am well aware of it. And most of the people around me that's been in business in Fulton are no longer here, and it's because of this council and one mayor after another and everybody else driving everybody out of town. And you be my guest, and who's going to pay the taxes? If somebody does something wrong in one of my apartments or in my store, it's not my responsibility to arrest them, to do anything else, and I shouldn't be punished for it.
This isn't going to happen on one occurrence, sir.
Wait a minute, are you doing your job? I'd say no. Is he doing his job? No, he's trying to push the job off on somebody else, and that's not going to happen.
You say it's not the responsibility of a landlord to have decent tenants in your apartments?
I have decent tenants.
Then you don't have a problem.
I'm not going to have a problem through your ignorance.
Anyone else care to speak on this?
Thank you. Y'all met me before, I'm Susan Albano. I am the homeowner of 516 Utica Street. And what I'd like to say is, we're all making an investment every day in this city. With me, it is staying here with our home, raising our children in a community. We all pay taxes, and yet it is your job to be responsible for your property the same way it is for me.
And I do.
Oh, I don't think so, Mr. Birch. I lived across the street from his property, and let me tell you, I am here because we do need this. I encircled everything that went on that would apply if this was in effect. Any of it, from assault to sexual offenses to insanity to weapons, alcohol, you name it, any of it, you know, it needs to pass for our children. I'm sorry, I'm not a business owner. I don't care. I am a homeowner, and I do have my children, and I plan on staying here and investing the rest of my life in Fulton to make it a better place, not a worse.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to speak on this issue?
My name is Rick Scott. I'm not here to fight God, let's see, send it to people who want it. One question I got, 6314, administrative immunity. If you make the law and everything, you should be able to back it up if it's legal. You shouldn't have to be immune, have any immunity to it. If the law's law, if you're making a bad judgment, and you're making a bad law, it won't stick. So if you're going to make the law, you should just well punish these people.
That's not, that's just saying that somebody acting within the province of their job, for example, the chief of police going and putting an order on a door can't be arrested for trespass. So we have had situations in the past where that may have been some confusion about that. It's not saying, it doesn't give any city official a right to go out and commit any crimes or anything like that.
I'm not saying it, you're making this law, so this law is, which are put on the books, and everything you write down here is that, like I said last meeting, you're backing 100% and it goes in front of the judge, that's a law that people make. So if it's a bad law and it's illegal law, then why should you be immune to it?
It's not saying that a city official that owns property is immune to it. Is that what you think it sounds like?
No, no, it's saying here that anybody who forces it, if you agree to, you may, you may do it, it's all the person that forces it. And like I said, Mr. Birch.
Let's see a question. That's what this says, is a person cannot be held personally responsible for this, personally.
But the city can.
Can the city? Yes.
The city, but we can't.
Yes. But not a personal, this isn't a personal situation, and that's what this does, is remove personal.
Well, that's what I want my charity, personal, but the city can still be held by it. If this is a bad law and it goes to court, the city can be held by it.
Yes.
Okay. And are there any other?
No.
Mr. Birch says, there is a lot of bad crap, we have around a couple too, and they have bad time, but we do have civil laws on the book, and the law, of course, for the city police department can stop a lot of it before it gets started.
If, if the current laws were taking care of the situation, we wouldn't be addressing this matter at this time.
You've been a law official a lot longer than I have been around this city, but I've seen where they have them last, I've seen them on the neighborhood, where they have them called, and they don't, you don't down in that area for half an hour to an hour. And I see the party stop, when the police department comes, it's all nice and quiet. I mean, some people, I've got you, I'm not for bad landlords, don't get me wrong, I just don't want to put a law out there and make me have to go and fight more people through the judicial system, and it's going to cost them, penalize me.
No, this, this isn't going to happen, and because it's going through the judicial system, because it has been modified to go before the city court judge, nothing is going to be done without the due process being taken care of. And for three convictions in a two-year period, this, this is something that, that really shows that there's a real problem at that address.
Okay, I understand something. Now, you got 637, we talked about this last meeting, lack of knowledge as a defense. Your properties have been bought up and somebody's been arrested. I don't see why that the landlord or the property owner cannot be notified that they have one strike against them. Because you can go right down through the city department, through the taxation, everything, you know who owns the property and mailing that, so that's no thing. I think if anybody get arrested, because you have some people out of town. I go to town, out of town in the wintertime, some I've been there and I thought they're nice, and you know, there's families around that hire nice, all of a sudden somebody gets in trouble. Man, they have two or three, within a week, they have two or three bad commitments against them, just like that.
But they wouldn't have convictions within that timeframe. It just isn't going to happen that fast. We're, we're not talking arrests, we are talking criminal convictions.
Yes, maybe I don't understand, you're all just going through, if still if you arrest them and then it goes to court, if they get one conviction, then they should be, property owners should be charged. Has there been one conviction, an arrest, a conviction on them, let them be notified the first time, and then that will bring them aware? Randy Jackson is going to know it and already know it.
You know what I don't understand?
Is that...
If you're giving people getting two or three convictions in a year or two, why the hell aren't they going to jail? What am I missing here?
Well, they can, they can go to jail, but we're talking, a lot of these are misdemeanor charges. The maximum penalty would be a year in jail, which means they'd be out in nine months anyways. Some of them won't even get any jail time for a conviction.
Yeah, but like, some of the problems that Sue had this summer, how many arrests did they have down there, and how many convictions?
Um, I believe two arrests in three months, one was the assault, and the other one, I'm not quite sure what the other one was.
Okay, so that might not even have been through the court system, yeah, but...
It, it might take that long to get through the court system.
Well, I'm just troubled to think that we, we got this kind of stuff going on, I mean, it's serious stuff, and nothing's happening. I don't understand that.
It, it's happening, but it's not...
But if they go to jail, you don't have to kick the family out.
Well, that's right, but we cannot determine they are going to go to jail. That is up to the court system.
Okay, is somebody being...
Well, why would the judge not send them to jail, and then we take them into court and have the judge tell us to close the building down?
Well, that, that's going to be up to the judge to see if there's enough evidence to warrant that. He may decide that there's not enough evidence, but at least by going through the court system, it gives the landlord or the property owner a chance to be heard.
I agree with that, but I'd rather see the guy go to jail than throw his kids out in the street.
We're not talking about throwing his kids out in the street.
Well, if you, let me tell you something, if you close an apartment down, there's four or five children there, and you put everyone out of that apartment to get to the perpetrator, they're going to go seek them.
If the landlord allows the person to stay there after the first or second conviction, I think landlord has to take a little responsibility here.
I do too. I'm not sticking up for the landlord, but my concern is that we're punishing people that don't, you know, if, if a guy commits murder and we put him in jail, he's got housing. If he has three of these offenses and we put his kids in the street, they don't have housing. That's cruel and unusual, Chris. Why?
If, if we put a person in jail for, for murder, what is going to take care, or who is going to take care of his family?
I don't know. Why don't we live under the bridge?
That's right, no, no, but who, under the circumstances right now, who is going to take care of the family if he is not able to?
Well, what I'm saying, Your Honor, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, if there was three of them type of convictions, would we close this house down and remove the family too? You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
I'm after getting the bum that's causing the problem, but I'm not...
They would be removed from there, but they could be removed from there even without this if he doesn't pay, you know, if somebody doesn't pay the rent.
Yeah, I know that, I know that, but that's not the extension of this council. We're taking a whole different role here than, than...
But this is putting this in the judge's hands. If the judge feels that it's necessary...
For the second or third time.
Right, right, but all the convictions have to go before the judge. You cannot be convicted without a court action.
I know.
Okay? And so after the, if it comes to the third, it doesn't say he has to after the third. After the third conviction, the city can ask the judge to do it. It doesn't say he has to. Nothing compels the judge to do this.
Well, I hope we got somebody that bad, he'll have them in jail before it comes to that.
I would like to think so.
Well, I know that, but there's an awful lot of people that shouldn't have kids, but they do. To me, I mean, when we look at a piece of legislation, I think we have to look at the whole thing, and we have some serious neighborhood problems, I know that, and I do think that landlords and property owners, whether landlords or homeowners or tavern owners, have a responsibility. But I'm just saying, I am concerned about what happens to what we might consider baggage, because when we look at people that we don't like, we tend to not like the whole bunch of them, including the children.
Well, I think, I think it will tend to, to happen the same way as is happening right now. If, if we were to, to put a person out, we, we have social services get involved and take care of this situation now. If a, if a, a breadwinner of a family wants to be put in jail and could not pay the rent and could not pay the bills, our society is not going to cast his family aside. It's not going to happen. They are going to be cared for, but we cannot allow these people that continue to break the laws and annoy their neighbors and make our city other than a decent place to live.
I agree.
We cannot allow this to happen.
I agree.
And I think there are, are checks and balances built into this ordinance at this time. I didn't necessarily agree with it in its first form. In the form it is right now, I think it takes care of the situation.
Now, you've got three convictions, two years, right? Three arrests?
Three convictions.
I rent my house off to a young couple, they look good, they're having a little drug problems that I don't know about, maybe she's running a prostitution on the side, don't know this. All of a sudden, you pick, you know, if the drugs come up, you hit the prostitution, you get drugs and prostitution, is that two convictions? No, wait a minute.
Okay.
He meets bail, or she meets bail, they get met each other, they go back the next day, or when they get out of bail within a week, 10 days, beats a living hack out of the shoe, is that the third one? It all happens within...
These aren't convictions.
One of them is a conviction.
They, the convictions aren't going to happen that fast. Unfortunately, our judicial system does not work that fast. I wish it did at times. It's very frustrating. Until there is a conviction, there's nothing.
I just did, you went to jail, three, you had, he could be arrested, or she could be arrested.
You, you...
Four days.
You are confusing arrests with convictions.
Everyone that doesn't go into court, you got three arrests, when it goes in the court, will they all be...
If you had a tenant and he got arrested, and I'm saying he or she got arrested for a penal law offense that was going to require them to go to a trial, do you say that you would not know by the time this went to trial, this would be happening?
You're telling me if I get them out of there, then I can rent my place that don't...
Absolutely. That's right, you have abated the nuisance, that's all.
You're talking about the property, if I get them out of there, then I find out about it, now they're gone.
That's right. And not going to. We're, we're not trying to penalize landlords, we are trying to eliminate problems.
We're going to live like Bob, who closed down half the bars in the city, how many fights, how many stuff goes over them places? I mean, there's a lot of things, breast curbs and stuff like that.
Yes, sir.
No. We're talking about Utica Street. I had a couple come in, and I have rented to several Puerto Ricans and several black people, and most of the time, they're pretty nice people. Okay? They moved into Utica Street, the neighbors didn't like them to start off with, which is fine, try them and see how it works out. They had problems with them, I gave them a 30-day notice, and that's all I can do. Talked to Harley on this situation. I said, "People I rent to have certain amount of rights, same as you do and the same as I do. I have to abide by the law."
Yes.
Am I right?
Yes.
What is the law? You give them 30 days' notice from the first of the month.
Okay.
Is that correct?
There's all different kinds, Gene, there's...
Well, they're paying their rent.
They're paying their rent. Do you have a lease?
Yeah, yep.
Is it a month-to-month?
And it's urban renewal.
Is it a month-to-month or a definite term?
A year's lease.
Can I just, can I say something there, real quick?
Sure, Arm.
Under Section 10, Paragraph B of HUD's lease, it says, "Any of the following types of criminal activity by the tenant, any member of the household, a guest, or another person under the tenant's control shall be caused for termination of the tenancy. One, any criminal activity that threatens the health, safety, or right to peaceful enjoyment of the premises by other residents. Two, any criminal activity that threatens the health, safety, or right to peaceful enjoyment of the residences by persons residing in the immediate vicinity, AKA neighbors. Or, three, any drug-related criminal activity on or near the premises." So the HUD lease says, these people get busted once, HUD can terminate that lease.
Which we did.
Then why are we, if that's the case, then why are we going through this law? Why aren't we just using this?
Not everybody's on HUD.
That, that's a HUD situation.
This is, this is HUD's lease.
It doesn't make any...
I bet you a bunch, huh?
A bunch, a bunch may be, but that doesn't make everybody.
If I have a bad tenant...
Yes.
I evict him.
If you have, and you have alleviated the nuisance, and at that point, it's over.
Correct. But this, what you already have on the books, okay? I take care of, I do the best I can to take care of all the neighbors anywhere that I, if I have an apartment house, I try to take care of them, I try to keep the place looking clean. If there's a bad tenant, I don't have control, I can't go in and beat them up, I can't get them out before time goes down.
But if you are taking action to alleviate the nuisance, you were taking care of the problem. Then, that is not the problem.
Okay.
The problem is...
I think it's the problem.
The problem is the landlord, and we have some that ignore all this, and they don't care who they rent to.
Start off with, you do have a few people in the city of Fulton that have a problem. In the city of Fulton, through HUD and through the county welfare, because the city of Fulton rents are less than a swiggle, end up in the city of Fulton. Okay? And you brought this on yourselves when you decided that you were going to go into this program of having the bus service, welfare plans, your workshops, and you brought it on yourselves. Okay? So now you're, you're doing everything all, the same as you always do, when you have a financial problem, you don't solve the financial problems, you just raise the taxes. You don't solve the problem. You don't use your head, like when you were buying equipment two years ago, you outfitted the whole world with new equipment.
No, just, just a moment, please. I've only been here since the first of the year, so please.
Yeah, that's another reason that everybody gets into, is they blame it on the last person here. And I think you people, I think you people...
Unfortunately, I didn't hit a bird on the last time.
...are trying to do a very good job, and I appreciate it, and I don't have any problem with the city of Fulton. Okay? But when they take and start pushing and shoving where I'm responsible for everybody else, I'm saying, no, I'm not. I have a police department I pay for, and if somebody does something wrong and the police breaks the law, the police department should go in and say, "Straighten your act up. It's not my job." And if you think it's going to be my job, I'm going to get out of Fulton, I'm going to get out of business, and I don't need you because you don't need me, because I'm not going to allow you to put anymore on my shoulders. I've done enough of it for 30 years. Okay? You drove everybody else out of business.
Gene, you said you're already, you said that you're already evicting your problem tenants, right? And you're already accepting the...
I always do, and I always try to take care, you, if you want to go on any of my properties, everything is as nice as you can be.
I don't doubt that, but if you say you're already evicting your problem tenants, then you're already accepting the responsibility that we're trying to push on a few people who won't take it.
Now, did you go over and see Mr. Connolly?
Yes, I did.
And what did he say?
He said it was no big deal.
Okay. What did he say about the arrest, that it was even, they should have never arrested him, didn't they?
Yes, he did.
And would you like to, would you like to explain that?
He said a lot of things.
This is the reason why, this, this because they were Puerto Ricans or Hispanics...
This has nothing to...
Wait just a minute.
No, 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 please.
Wait just a minute.
One at a time.
What, tell the story on that. Make it come out like it was, not the way it sounds.
Mr. Connolly told me several times that a lot of times, if he's not asked any questions, he doesn't offer information.
Nobody asked him, no, did they?
No, they did not.
Okay. Did they, did the, did the people do anything wrong? No, they did not.
Then I would imagine they wouldn't be convicted in court now, would they?
They didn't, but we're bringing the story up, aren't we?
There we are.
But it wasn't true, was it?
I'm not the judge, I don't know.
Well, wait a minute, you asked him, didn't you? He had no reason to lie.
That's, I've gotten two different stories from two different neighbors. That doesn't make me the, the ultimate decision maker.
Okay, then don't make me the judge either.
I'm not. I'm saying that you're already accepting the responsibility that this time...
You're trying to make me the judge for everybody I rent for, I rent to, and I'm not going to allow you to put me there.
That's not accurate.
No, but what you're, what you're doing, you're taking care of the problem. You are not one of the problem landlords. If you were taking care of the problem once you were aware of it.
I don't want you to make sure that I have to take care of it. It's not my job to do your job.
Wendy Smith, Fourth Ward, and first of all, just because somebody's on HUD or welfare does not give them the right to be a nuisance. Second of all, we, sir, did not ask you to be a landlord in the city of Fulton. That was a decision of your own. Therefore, your property is your responsibility. Do not cram trouble down a neighbor's throat.
Anyone else?
There's, there's more than a couple problems I still see with the ordinance, but the two things that I want to focus on now, I think, are, are things that we're all talking about here in trying to deal with the neighbors frustrations and frustrations that landlords can have. One problem is that the unspoken idea behind this is that, that there is a standard or a duty or responsibility that the council is going to try to impose on landlords. Problem with this is that the ordinance does not set forth any standard of due care. Problem with this is that the ordinance does not set forth any standard of due care. Every, you know, the comments have been, "We want landlords to be responsible. We want them to do their duty. We want them to do whatever they're supposed to do." But the ordinance does not say what they're supposed to do. The implication is that, in a fair inference, both from reading the Act and hearing what has been said by the council, is that you don't want landlords to rent to troublemakers. Now, I think a fairer way to draft an ordinance is to say, "Here is the standard which we require you to meet. If you fall below this standard, then there are consequences, and here's what they are. There you have something to litigate, whether or not the landlord has met that standard. You've defined it, and so now we know what it is. Right now, the only thing that we can talk about here is, okay, landlords are renting to people who are troublemakers. And that's what neighbors are understandably frustrated about. The question is whether or not you can try to do indirectly what you may be reluctant to do directly. The direct thing to do would be to say, "All right, landlords," or whoever you want to address the ordinance to, "here's what you, here's the standard of care. This is what you have to meet. If you don't meet it, okay, then these things happen." What you're trying to do is, is you're, is instead of doing that, you're creating an ordinance and say, "Okay, if these events occur on your property, then we close it down." So now the landlord has to say, "Okay, now how do I comply with this?" "They haven't really set forth criteria that I have to meet, so I've gotta figure out what do I have to do. The only thing that I can do is try to get rid of nuisances, and the only way to do that is to get rid of people who cause nuisances or who may cause nuisances." The landlord's gonna probably try to err on the side of caution and maybe try to do a little bit overkill. Landlords, as anybody would be worried, is that, again, without a clear standard, somebody, an enforcement official from the city who, you know, maybe, maybe the people now wouldn't wanna do it, but somebody in the future may say, "Look, this ordinance gives me, I interpret this ordinance to give me this power." And I think we all know that that's, has happened in the past and could very well happen in the future, so you wanna try to avoid that. The biggest problem with the ordinance is it's not gonna solve your problem. It is not a nuisance abatement ordinance. It is a nuisance mobility ordinance. What we're gonna do is transfer the problem from landlord A to landlord B. Because the troublemaker can move to a different landlord. So you haven't created any, any better situation in the city as a whole. You've just transferred it. Can be next door, across the street, as long as it's a different landlord. So, the two problems are, is that, one, it just is not gonna do what you want it to do. And secondly, you're trying to get the landlords to meet a standard of care, but you're not stating that standard of care. Those are the reasons why I'm opposed to the ordinance as it's written. And I mean, there are other things, but those are the two big, the two big things I've got.
Well, if I might, and I, I simply, or I agree with you somewhat, but I think we are setting a standard, and that standard is the penal law. Yeah, we're setting it for, I guess, when you're dealing in the landlord-tenant realm, we're setting it for the tenants, which means that the landlord is presumed to have to be able to control their behavior. But we're not saying that they have to control their behavior. We're saying that they have to abate the nuisance when they learn it's, it's a problem. And if they don't learn it until after the third strike, when we say to them, "You have a problem," and they say, "Fine, we'll evict the problem," then we're, then we're, then the city's gonna be happy with that. As far as the mobility issue, I think if this is passed and is suddenly used, say, over the course of six months, five, six, eight times, and all of a sudden, it's the same people that are the nuisances, I would think, or I would hope, that the landlords are not gonna be so cold to each other as we saw in the first meeting, that finally, they're gonna get the message that they need to talk to each other, and they're actually gonna get the point that maybe we shouldn't rent to those people if they've already caused a problem at this other house. And we're gonna have a system set up where anybody can go to the city clerk's office and find out who has been part of a prior nuisance abatement proceeding. I think that eventually, if this is used even, even to that extent, which I frankly wouldn't even, I honestly wouldn't imagine that it's gonna be, even be able to use that much initially, but if it was used even to that extent, I would think in the very near future, it wouldn't take long, I mean, within a year, that the mobility is gonna be out of Fulton. They're gonna move right out. Because there's not gonna be a landlord that'll rent to them.
It would be speculation, but it would be, it's, it's very probable that, that somebody, you know, that the nuisance can confine its, you know, would confine itself to the city and just move. Now, I mean, if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, but I think that that, you know, usually, I mean, people are smart enough to know how the system works and how it doesn't work. And people are usually smart enough, and tenants are also smart enough to know how to work within the system and get what they, get as much as they can out of it. And again, you know, the thing about it is, is that what, you know, what the council really is saying, what the council said last time, was that, "No, we really don't want landlords renting to troublemakers." And that, you know, the way to abate the nuisance is to get rid of the troublemaker. And, and again, that's sort of implied, and it's the unwritten, but I think it's the spoken standard that everybody is, both in the council and in the public, they want the landlords to be responsible, and so they haven't defined that specifically, but the implication is, you get, you know, you get two convictions on your property, and then now the landlord's gotta say, "Okay, some people's gotta start to go." And we've gotta choose who's gotta go, and the, you know, the landlord not having any other standard, just knowing that, "Okay, I've gotta get rid of troublemakers," is gonna have to try to think for themselves, "All right, what's the standard now that's gonna keep the city happy? What have I gotta do about, you know, getting rid of, you know, for lack of a better word, the troublemakers, so that I don't get the third one?" And, and again, I think it's better to structure a law by saying, "Here's the standard that you need. You do this, you're okay. If you fall below the standard, now you got problems." Whereas here, it's saying that, is that, "Okay, there is no spoken standard other than three convictions on the property stemming from the use of the property within a 24-month period." And, you know, that doesn't give the landlord, or, well, or anybody, any owner of the premises, a, an objective criteria which they know that they have to meet. So, I mean, I think that it's, I think what you're trying to do is rather than directly say, "Here is your standard that we expect you to meet," you're doing it more indirectly, which I think can create problems with enforcement, interpretation, because there is more ambiguity in the way this kind of ordinance is worded, where it's, "Okay, if these things happen on your property, you're done unless you show you've made, that you've given, approved satisfactory to the court that the nuisance is abated and won't be maintained and won't reoccur."
Okay. If, if just by chance, you were a landlord, and if by chance, one of your tenants was dealing drugs from your property, and he was convicted once, would you ask him to leave the property?
Well, you see, you're asking the wrong question, okay? The question to me is...
That is the question.
Well, I see. What you wanna do, you see, no, the question is, what is the legal, what is legally permissible for the council to regulate and how to regulate it? What I would do, for my own ethical standard, I would operate upon a much higher standard than the city would impose upon me, I would hope, anyway. But the question here is not, you know, "What would you do if you were a landlord, or what would I do if I were a landlord?" The question is, what is the role of government in regulating conduct of people? That's the issue. Now, the, and there, I think that it's a, a better way to legislate is to say, "Okay, here is the, here is the course of conduct that we expect you to meet." And say, "Okay, this, if you, you know, if you meet the standard, you're fine." Rather than to say, again, the indirect approach, which allows for, there's more arbitrariness that can occur because there's more ambiguity.
Do you have a suggestion on how to do that, other than how we are proposing to do it?
Other than what I said the last time?
Well, you know, it would be nice to get everybody to obey the law, but having been in law enforcement for over 24 years, I know that this is not going to happen.
Well, no.
And sometimes it has to be forced upon a person.
Well, no, the, the problem is that, if you can say, what, what, what the city has to do is to say, "Okay, you asked yourself a question of political theory, is, okay, what are the areas that are properly regulatable? I don't know if that's the right word, but, you know, what are the areas that can properly be legislated upon? And then how is the least restrictive way do we legislate within that area? Now, the, you know, a government certainly has a stake in the civic virtue of its citizens, but, again, there, you know, if you try to take what I'm gonna call the middle ground of the area that is non-legislated morality, you've got, then I think the city, or any government, has to be very cautious in taking that middle ground, which is, is needed for civic virtue to survive. But if it's taken by the government, then I think there is a lot more room for problem. And the, I mean, I, I think the, the solutions are long-term solutions. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna review what I said before the last time, but I think that, you know, there are some, some, you know, there are some carrot approaches that the city can use. And then there are also some approaches that the community as a whole, not as a government, but as a whole.
If you were just unfortunate enough to live in a neighborhood where there was, just for instance, rental property next door to you, and the landlord rented to a couple, and the couple decided that at some point in time, they didn't like, did not like one another anymore, and possibly physically abused one another out in the front yard, and your children were in your yard, would you take offense to that?
I wouldn't blame the city for it.
No, no, I'm not saying it. Would you take offense to that? Would you want your children subjected to that?
Well, again, it's the wrong question to ask. There are, there are a lot of things in life that bother me.
These, these are the questions that are being opposed to us.
No, I wanna tell, no, I'm gonna say to you, the, the problem is that people are looking to you to solve their problems. And government is not the answer to every single problem. There are a lot of things that go on in this world that I don't like. But I don't go to the local government or, and say, "Pass a law to punish troublemakers," or "Pass a law that punishes people who don't deal with troublemakers." The, the issue is not whether I like misbehavior. I mean, nobody should say, "Oh, yes, I'm in favor of having a husband and wife duke it out on the front porch on some summer evening so that your nine-year-old kids next door can watch it." Nobody's in favor of that. However, it does not logically follow that therefore, that the council should pass this nuisance abatement law. The, you know, it's, it is, it is not a, a logical progression. Because what people are saying is that, "There's a problem. The landlord won't solve it, so we're gonna go pass a law." And that's the jump in the logic.
I think, I think what the problem is, is the frustration that nothing in the system up till this point has taken care of this problem, and they're calling upon us to do it.
Right, but the question is that you ought to be asking yourself is, A, is this an area that we should be legislating? B, if it is, and then be able to justify it, but B, if it is an area that you should be legislating in, then, okay, how should you act as a, as a government? Those are, you know, it's, it's a straight question of political theory. But the, because not every single sin of mankind should be, pass, you know, should you pass a law against. That's, that's where I think we've gotta be careful. Now, you know, do I, you know, are there people frustrated out there? Yes. You know, do we understand the frustration? Yes. But does it, but just because there's frustration, doesn't mean that you have to legislate in that area. Now, again, I think the problem is that people who are frustrated want faster solutions, and I think this problem is gonna require a long-term solution, which I think, I mean, I certainly, it's, I mean, it's something, the civic virtue of this community is something that I care very much about. I haven't been at all bashful about, you know, about it, and it's something that I certainly, you know, wanna take part in trying to solve the problem, but, and...
And I think some of the things that we have discussed, we need to continue to look at to see if we can't take care of the problem long-term through changing some...
Souls.
Some souls, okay, yes. But I think in the meantime, that this is something that we need to do to take care of the problem for the residents that we have that find this course of action to be a nuisance.
Well, the problem is, is that what you're gonna do is you're gonna, you know, the, you know, the, you're gonna, the residents and next to landlord A are gonna be happy, and the residents who live by landlord B are gonna now be unhappy, because the problem is now going to, to move, so...
But if the landlords will communicate and will check with people and see if there are problems with behavior prior to renting, other than saying, "No, as long as you got the dollar, you can stay here," that is the person that we're trying to change their attitude. That it's not all based on the dollar.
I understood that's what you're trying to do, but you're not saying that in the law here. What, I think you're better off saying, "Here is the standard which we want landlords to meet." And if you wanna say in the law, although I think you may wanna get the advice of council, you may wanna say, "Landlords shall not rent to people who have been convicted of such and such." Now, that's really what you're saying, but I don't think the council wants to do that by passing a law that says, "Landlords, you have to do this. You know, you, you may not rent to people who have these convictions." And if you don't wanna do it directly, then why do you wanna do it indirectly by essentially forcing the landlords to do that and to communicate among themselves so that the situation, if you wanna call it that, is not just made mobile within the city?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
My name's Alan Rutan. I lived here for most of my life, and this is the New York State Landlord Tenant Guide. I think you guys ought to read it. You know, there's discrimination and everything else that I can go by. You know, there's discrimination and everything else that I can go by, and I think this law probably doesn't discriminate against a lot of people, gonna follow all this, so, I'd like to pass it down, you can...
Does that law require that you have to rent to somebody that causes a problem?
Mr. Rutan?
Oh, sure.
I did read it after you dropped a copy off for me today. What it does say is that you cannot refuse to rent to people who, you know, based on their race, color, creed, you know, the standard terms, but we're not saying discriminate based on race, or religion, or anything like that. It also says that you cannot refuse to rent to somebody because they have kids, and we're not saying, don't rent to somebody because they have kids. We're not saying either one, don't rent to them based on their color, or their religion, or because they have kids. We're saying, don't rent to them because they're criminals, which, it certainly doesn't say that in here.
Okay, there's, page three...
It also says that you cannot refuse a friend.
Right. Somebody come in there, right?
Because he's a friend.
Right.
I'm not saying refuse him because he's a friend, I'm saying refuse him because he's a criminal. There's a difference there, too.
You don't know. Read the book, and it'll tell you the whole thing.
Well, I think if you do the background check, you will know.
You know, I've read it, and that's, you know, triple damages for me if I do, you know.
That's if you tell somebody, I won't rent to you because you have kids, or because you're black, or because you have a friend.
Right, but if I rent to you, and you bring somebody else in, you can do that, and I got no control over that.
That's right, but if you put in your lease, that any criminal activity at that location would be grounds for eviction, then once it happens, you evict them, the problem's gone, it's not your problem.
I think you guys oughta, you know, somebody screws up, dealing drugs, or whatever, you oughta have them arrested, you know, and could be gone.
That's right, but once they are arrested, and even if they are convicted, if they come back to that place, the neighbors are not gonna be real happy with this.
That's true, but, you know, you gotta read the book and find out what I can do. I don't have any power. I'm, you know, as a tenant, landlord.
I'm Joe Mancino. I've been here thirty years in business. Now, you're opening the door for discrimination, once you try to get somebody out for some particular reason. Now, whether the allegations are true or not, if it presents a lawsuit to you, who's gonna be responsible for your attorney's fees? Now, you're opening the door, by putting me in a position where I have to dismiss, you've got two mates, mate A, mate B. Mate A may be the bad one. Mate B, mate B, may be a perfectly upright citizen. Now, I'm discriminating. I've gotta get rid of two of them.
How are you, I don't understand what you're, what you're...
Well, it's a little ambiguous, but, there is going to be, there are going to be avenues open, under the discrimination laws. Now, we could sit here in front of us here, and you say, if you don't say you're black, if you don't rent, you can't be specific about kids, or that, or other things, but these things can turn around and bite you. And what I'm anticipating, is that a lawsuit turn around, and that I'm sued for discrimination, trying to maintain your standards. Who's going to take care of my fees?
Do you, do you have a lease?
Yes, that's been...
Do you have a lease for your, for your properties?
No.
No? Okay. If a landlord, you know, I would suggest that landlords have leases, and they put into these leases, that if a person commits a crime on the premises, and is convicted of that crime, that they can be evicted. Once you evict them, that's gone. The problem's over.
What if they go burglarize the bank downtown?
That has nothing to do with it.
You're only concerned with that one piece of property.
We're talking about the piece of property, if, things that happen there, and if there are convictions, all you have to do is take care of the nuisance, and it's, it's no longer a problem.
All right, then how do we, if there is a discrimination suit?
How would there be a discrimination suit if you put this language into your lease?
You're gonna get people upset, and they're going to say what they want to, and they can sue for any reason that they really like.
Anybody can sue, yes, but if...
And you're putting...
But if you have a conviction, if there's a conviction on the record, on the court record, a conviction for a crime that occurred at a specific location, and you have it in your lease, that that is grounds for eviction, you can evict them, and they do not have a case against you.
I understand that, and just as you understand that everybody who's bad should be in jail, or at least do their share of time in jail. I wanna share with you all, just a brief experience, it doesn't even pertain to this, but it was something that did happen to me. In Chitnango, New York, I owned a piece of property on Route 13, many years ago. I foreclosed and got it back, and I inherited a poor family. They were on various assistances, they were accepting money from two different avenues, two different services, and, very nice, kind of backward. Now, for maybe about three, four years, they're getting money, and they're supposed to be paying me, I never received one penny's rent from them, but it was okay. I let them stay there. Somewhere down the road, I got a letter from the Department of Health, and they wanted me to make renovations there, because it was not up to standards. Now, I got in touch with their, their department, and I says, and I explained to them, I had never received one penny from that family. I let them live there, in hopes that maybe they would keep the property up, which didn't happen. But I did let them live there. They says, well, we're sorry, you're either gonna have to fix it up, or we're going to have to condemn the property. I says, now, wait a minute, you're going to chase these people out of a place where they've been living, and they're comfortable? You're going to send them to somebody else who probably really needs the money that they get, and they don't give to anybody else? I says, why don't you take that money, and direct it to fixing it up, and they can stay there, and go on without paying me? He says, well, we're not in the construction business, that's your problem. Well, with due course, they did condemn the property. The people, not understanding, had to move. They burned the property down, thinking that it was my doing. And it was just a sad situation. But, people don't understand. Now, you could force us to do whatever we have to. Now, I don't think there's too many people, if there are landlords that are not living up to the standards that you would like, if you could find some way to deal with them. I have no real purpose in, in being here tonight. Whatever properties that I've owned here have been maintained, and I try to run them decently, and I've, I don't think we've ever had a complaint with me. But it's, you've gotta think about what people don't understand, and how they are going to react. Now, yes, you could pass this law, but, I think you need more of a police action to real, really deal with the individual. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Hi, Nancy Cavalier, Sixth Board. Two weeks ago, when I got up to talk about this, I pointed out that there were a couple of little problems I had. I wanna make clear, make sure that you understand that I am for this, I'm not against it, it's just that, I just have a problem with that, going from landlord A to landlord B, you know? You're saying have the landlords talk with one another, and that's not happening. I don't know if it will happen, it would be great if it does, but, I, I do think that this is a way where we can start, but, you know, there's also room for improvement in it also. But I just wanna make sure that you all understood that I was, I am for it, I'm not against it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue? Anyone on our council, courtesy speakers?
I would. I've been on the council for five years, and I think alderman Lincoln has been on for, how many, are you in ninth year now, or eleventh? Ninth year. Alderman Woodward has been on as an alderman, as a mayor, and as an alderman, again. I think we've seen some tremendous improvements and changes in our city, over the last few years. I think we've seen the, we have seen the War Memorial being renovated, and we've seen the community center, we've seen City Hall being renovated, we've seen various areas of the city, recreational, we've opened up North Bay, we are presently working on Bullhead Point, and that's gonna be a nice facility when we get through with it. We opened up Indian Point Landing, which is a boat launch. We're presently working on downtown, December 2nd, at the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, the street will be open. So I think there's so many positive things happening, and I think this is one more positive thing that we can do. We've had three public hearings, we had a workshop. The first public hearing, we had thirteen people speak, the second public hearing, we had twelve, and tonight, we had eight. We've had some of the same people back here, altogether, there's been twenty-six different people that have spoke. I think that we can thank them for their interest, for their concern, they have a lot of interest in their city, as we do. And I wanna thank these people for making their intentions known to us, and helping us to make better decisions. We have changed this three different times. The Legislative Committee, which has worked real hard on this, the city attorney, has given this many different changes, and I just wanna thank the following people, Fran Gantley, Robin Griffin, Kathy Trowbridge, Greg Bailey, Don Welch, Richard Scott, Alan Delain, Paul Cooper, Dan Abraham, Ron Trainor, Al Skotiri, Wally Osser, Howie Single, Ron Patrick, Tom Tietro, Steve Chapo, Nancy Cavalier, Tom Kenyon, Jerome Marbido, Sue Alfano, Wendy Smith, Gene Birch, Al Ruda, and Joe Mancino. All of you people had, had all of this input in this particular piece of legislation. So we've had, we've had ex-aldermen speak, we've had school board members speak, we've had the largest landlord in the city speak, we've had small landlords, we've had concerned neighbors, we've had a lawyer speak to it, so we've had tremendous outpouring of people that had an opinion, and this is the way democracy works. Everybody had something to say about, some favored it, and some were against it, so the council has a very tough decision to make. So hopefully, I would encourage, in a positive state of mind, for the rest of the council to go ahead and pass this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Yes, Mayor Mas. I feel, and it's my opinion, that the law-abiding citizen is taking a second seat again. The criminal element is what many people want taken care of, they want a clean and safe neighborhood, without frustration. I wanna thank all the input that has come into this council. There has been many people that I've spoken to, out in the streets, and many of these people have gone in favor of this, they want their neighborhood cleaned up, they want a safe neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Why don't you just poll the whole council, see if any...
Well, this, once this is over, we're...
Yeah, I understand what you're gonna do when it's over. We're gonna vote on it.
Yes, there's gonna be a vote on it.
Yes, there is.
But, but what I would like to say, is I appreciate the input, the input that we got brought about numerous changes in this proposed legislation, and I think it brought it from something that would be very difficult to work for us, to something that will work, and still provide protection for landlords, and protection for the people that find there are nuisances in their neighborhoods. And I think that this is something that, at this point in time, the way it is written at this time, I'm in favor of it. Is there anyone else who would care to speak during this public hearing?
Let's finish the other side of that room. John, do you have anything?
Oh, no, not really.
All right.
Okay. I just wanna, I wanna thank Alderman Thompson, did a lot of homework on this, and Chief Spahn did an awful lot of homework on it, in the Legislative Committee. Heard a lot of concerns tonight about, you know, the city trying to dictate to landlords, that the landlords are gonna be responsible, but I really don't think that the, I think what, what the problem is here, is that landlords have got to start looking at their, their business, you know, as just that, and as other businesses have responsibility to their community via environmental problems, whatever, that is enforced by the government, you are also responsible, in my opinion, for social problems, okay, that you're bringing into the community. And if you're gonna run a business, if you're gonna run a beer garden, and you're gonna have fights in a beer garden, you've got a prob, you know, you should be trying to take care of that situation. A similar thing here with the landlords, if you've got a problem with tenants out, fistfighting in their front yard, using foul language, and everything else, you've got families that live around there with, you know, three-year-olds, four-year-olds, I don't think that they should be subjected to that, and I think you should do your duty, you know, it's, you know, take it on yourself. I really would not like to have a law like this, but there are landlords that really don't care, and this is why we're looking at it. And I, I support the law, I would like to present it and make the motion on it when it comes time, because I feel that, you know, I'm the one that really brought it up, I'll take the responsibility for any hits that wants to come after this. You know, if somebody wants to come after somebody for nuisance abatement, I'm your target, and I will take that responsibility.
Thank you.
Careful with the word "target."
Target, yeah, clutch.
I don't know how much I wanna beat a dead horse, but, wanna just talk about a couple of things that came up today, and at the previous public hearings. I wrote down five points against this ordinance, and I'm gonna go through them. Number one, the current laws are not adequate, because they're not putting people in jail. Well, strangely enough, when we listen to the arguments against code enforcement, we keep hearing about how the city's a little too strict with what they enforce, and, but the flip side now, is that we're complaining, because if somebody spits on the street, we don't throw them in jail. So, I think the laws are adequate, but I think that the landlords need to accept some responsibility. Number two, lack of knowledge, not a defense. I understand where you're coming from, but from a practical point of view, I don't see the city hiring a new cop to sit upstairs at court every day, check off the names of people who get convictions, then run downstairs and put them in the computer, and as soon as somebody gets to number three, we're gonna bang on your door and say, get out. I know there'd be a couple volunteers for that job, but I don't see that happening. I, I can't picture a situation where a landlord will not know about this. From a practical point of view, I think, after the police have been there four, five, six, seven, eight, nine times, I think the landlord's probably gonna end up getting a couple of phone calls, and that should be long before conviction number one, let alone two or three. Number three, as far as putting the rest of the poor family out on the street, I just, it's something that's been sticking with me since the first public hearing, and I'm just kinda concerned that there isn't a whole bunch of concern, that the poor children have to live in that environment to begin with, let alone worry about it after somebody's been convicted three times. As far as a nuisance mobility ordinance, I'll go back to this, there's a section in here that says this is on record for public review and inspection in the city clerk's office. You can't be bothered to call down to the city clerk's office, then I guess you're asking for trouble. And, the last one, the intrusion of government point, and while I would entertain the opportunity to debate governmental theory with Mr. Osser, I, I know exactly what you're saying, should we be able, should we govern this, and how do we do it? Next to that, I wrote C, number one, and I think that the standard is set, the standard is, you can't be convicted three times in two years, and... And absent of, let's see, if I'll pick the right words. Absent of being storm troopers and telling people that, "You're hit number three, by the way. Now I'm gonna come and get you." I think this is the least intrusive way to do it because there is a lot of flexibility. There is a lot of ambiguity. And, you know, one of the points brought up at the first public hearing is what if you have kids that have a party and you're out of town? I think the first time, shame on you. The second time, shame on you. The third time, don't you think you better think before you go out of town, before you let your kids have a beer party? I mean, that's an unfortunate part of society today. I think this law, because it is, uh, I feel has no teeth because it's gonna be very difficult to get somebody, uh, I think you're gonna get only the worst. Somebody who is so bad that they get three convictions in two years. From the way I've seen the court system work, it's kinda difficult to get one conviction in two years, let alone three. So, I mean, I'd like to see it a little bit tougher, but we'll start with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
The council did do a lot of work on this and Donna Schautern, and I can see a lot of things in this law that are good. Uh, you're not gonna clap for me because I'm still not in favor of it, but I, I wish you'd listen to me for a minute. Uh, I was on this council in the eighties and we had the same problems that we're having today, only I don't think we had as many of them. Uh, I do think that when we increased the section eight, number of section eight units in the city in ninety-one, we brought some of these problems that are inherent to lower income. Also, uh, and, and it's hard to, for me to say this because I don't wanna come across as being prejudiced, but during the eighties, uh, we had a migrant population in the city that used to come here in this area during the summer months, send their money home and then in the winter months, go back home. And then we had, uh, sometime towards the mid-eighties, we had, um, another agency committee called Real Opportunities that brought whole families of migrants and minorities here who definitely lived differently than we do. Their culture, their standard of living is towards some of them. No, it's, well, it's true. Uh, but, so now you have them living here. And you have them living here in some of the lower-income housing and, and Fulton does have lower-income housing in sort of... Well, would you please let me finish? I listened to you, okay? Now, I looked at this, uh, uh, paper, this, this article that was in the paper Sunday that we drafted our legislation after out of Syracuse. They've had it since ninety-five and they've used it four times in the city of Syracuse. So they went back and redrafted it and made it so now they only need two convictions in two years instead of three because somehow they're not, they're having the same problem we are. The people who are causing the problem aren't being put in jail, so they're trying to figure out a way to get rid of them. But in, in eighty-one and eighty-two, in the three hundred block of Seneca Street, we had these same problems and we abated the nuisance with the laws we had. Yeah, we removed some of the housing, but we also removed some of the tenants. We had it at four oh eight Seneca Street with six apartments. Them apartments are empty now. We didn't need this law. Two years ago, after I got back on the council, we had this problem on Keoga Street and there's three places we closed. We didn't have this law. And another one on Yuka Street. Why do we need this law? If I can do it four, five, six, seven, eight places, why do we need to know? What is wrong that we can't get together with what we have and not make what we have work? If we can't make what we have work now, we're not gonna make it this work. I don't blame Mrs. Alfano at all. I can tell you right now, uh, I do feel that the responsibility lies some with the landlord, most with the perpetrator, but a, a heavy amount of it weighs right here with us lawmakers because when we pass a law, we pass it and then what happens, happens. Now, those neighborhood problems that I had two years ago, it took countless hours. One night, we had seventeen arrests in them three buildings. There were seventeen families, by the way, in them three buildings. They're not there now. The buildings aren't there. But we had meetings with the police chief, we had the tenants down, right down here, the landlord. We even had the judge. He couldn't make a determination, but he said, "If you bring, if you make legitimate arrests and you bring the evidence to this court, we'll do something about it." And we did. And they're gone. And I've argued, uh, this year about code enforcement and, and people, uh, we, we all seem to get our opinions and unfortunately, and I, and I'm probably guilty of it too, we kick our heels up and, uh, something gets lost, okay? Code enforcement's the greatest thing in the world. The only point I have ever argued is the direction for the city workforce is whether it be code enforcement, police, or whatever, should come from the legislative body and the mayor, the ones that make it. We should set the priorities in this town. We shouldn't have people outside, no ladies, be, and old men because a porch needs painting. We should be in the neighborhoods where these people are kicking the kids around and harassing the neighbors all night long. What you put up with this summer, it, right, and you should never have, put up with it and I can't understand why you, why it went as far as it did if something didn't happen. But I can tell you, I'll give you the addresses and the names and I'll show you places. I haven't had a problem doing it. I have to, had to spend a lot of time. And you, sometimes I go talk to the people that perpetrators. I mean, I'd argue when I'm away, they sober up and we go talk to them and try to do something. And if they don't wanna do it, I mean, we had a bunch of them down here last year. I seen in nineteen eighty-two, this audience filled up with, uh, we had the Spanish Action League actors because they thought we were picking on minorities and we weren't. But, uh, at the time, we said, "Hey, you know, uh, we don't care what color you are. You don't, you're in a street, you know, beat your girlfriend's..." And we stopped it. But for some reason, no, we gotta have some other law to stop it. I, I don't understand that. If we can't make work what we got, this isn't gonna help it. We can have all the laws in the world, but if we don't have the backbone to get behind it, go out and get our hands dirty, it's not gonna work. It's not working in Syracuse. With a city the size of Syracuse and the, the rampant use of drugs and crack houses up there, if they can only do four of them since ninety-five, what is going on? And they've got an officer up there that says he, he says, "I do probably forty investigations a month. About twelve go to the notice stage, then we probably have three or four hearings per month, the rest probably are solved before that stage," which is good, you know, but the, the thing of it is, one a year, in a city that size, what are we gonna have here? If, if we're gonna rely on this to take care of your problem, your problem's not gonna get solved, you know? And I think, uh, Mr. Birch has spoke, uh, tonight. I mean, I think you do have some responsibility. I don't think you have all the responsibility. You certainly can't watch over them. I understand that. But would you be opposed if you had a meeting with, with, with the city officials and, and you bring your tenant right in and say, "Hey, look, you're gonna leave if this keeps up"?
Sir, what I did is I talked to Harley and I said, "By law, I have to give them thirty days' notice." And I said, "If everybody lightens up within forty-five days, the problem will go away."
Well, the problem when people lighten up... They lighten up, they have a few beers and then they un-lighten again.
Well, before I talk about the neighbors, I just said, "All I can do is I have to abide by the law that everybody has already set up and has been set up. And there isn't anybody that likes to keep good tenants and clean places." I went through and refilled the whole place, new carpet.
Ah, yeah.
And everything else, nice tenants in there right now, but this law is not gonna change it. The point I was trying to get at was that if the police department goes to the tenants and tells them to straighten their act up or arrest them if they're doing something wrong, that will work. What I say is not going to work.
Well, I got into the same problem this summer, down next to my mother-in-law's house and believe me, I heard about it quite a few times and I don't blame her. And we even had a petition come to the city, not this summer, but last summer. So finally...
I work with all of my neighbors too. I mean, I, there's not anybody feels more bad about it than I do. But there is only certain limitations that I have and I try to run a good ship on everything I ever do in my life.
But I think if there's a, a persistent problem anywhere, then it probably should be shut down. But, uh, what happened down here is, is, uh, the police were down there every night and finally, I went down and watched what was going on and I said, you know, "We got a couple of young girls out in the street drinking, fighting. Why don't we take somebody to jail?" And finally, they did and it subsided somewhat after that. But see, we were kinda down there mediating this thing every night and, uh...
If, if we use, if we were to use this ordinance along with the other laws that we have, I think it will help to alleviate the problem. Is this alone gonna take care of it? No, it's not.
Your Honor, my feeling is, if we... My feeling is, is nothing's gonna take care of it unless we get the backbone and, uh, and work with the people that we got right now to make them do what we want them to do. This thing right here, I, uh, I've asked, uh, last couple of years about what, uh, some of the places that I have in the Sixth Ward that are had because of some of the problems I've had. And I was told that because of the low income, I don't have a right to know. Come to find out, we can, we can, uh, have tenants removed that are, that have one conviction, not three. One's better than three.
I think the alderman, I think every alderman should get a copy of that too.
Well, I, I've, but I've been told, as an elected official, I wasn't privy to that information.
Hmm, okay.
But I just wanted everyone to know where I'm coming from and, uh, I have a, my, my own personal opinion. I think that part of the reason we have the problem with the people we do is because we don't hold them responsible. We always hold someone else. We hold someone else responsible to feed them, to clothe them, to shelter them, okay? Now we're gonna hold someone else responsible for the way they act. And I just don't think that by doing that, they're ever gonna get the message.
Okay. Thank you.
Instead of, uh, looking toward a legislation for this problem, how about if where the problems exist, the alderman gets in touch with the landlord and they try to resolve this and get the council involved? Now we're pinpointing, now we're not including all landlords, we're pinpointing the problem spots.
This legislation is gonna pinpoint the problem spots.
I think in my own mind that we need a lot more work on it than what this will bring because I don't think, I, I think you're gonna be two years before you get one place that you can apply this to.
If you look at...
If it worked with one other person, like if my legislator gave to me, "It's a jovial property down there, we gotta do this." Then we go analyze the problem and you're going to help me with the solution.
The only reason that that can't be done right now.
That, that is, we try to do that. We try to do that and we run into problems with some of these landlords.
What happens when you go to a landlord and say, "Look, you got a problem. I just wanna let you know that these are the seven calls that I got in the last three days." And the only response you get is, "So? I got a mortgage to pay. I got high taxes. I got a mortgage to pay. I got water bills to pay. I'm get, I'm collecting money. What do you want me to do about it?" I mean, where are you going with that argument?
That, that's the attitude that you gotta stick...
That's, that's the attitude that we have to change. That, that attitude is not acceptable.
Thank you.
Thank you. I declare this public hearing closed. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
No, I'll second it. I'd ask for a roll call vote as well.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Lincoln.
Oh.
Alderman Sahaski.
I just wanna say one thing before my vote. I believe that this is not a total one-hundred percent cure-all, but I certainly believe in my strict opinion that it is going to be a very good start and I will vote for this.
Alderman Weston.
Yes.
Alderman Sherman.
Yes.
Alderman Thompson.
You better believe it. Yes.
Alderman Woodward.
No.
Motion is carried, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next item?
Results, city clerk be authorized, directed, advertised for public hearing to be held on December fifteenth relative to proposed local law which would amend subsection C two sixty-three of Fulton City Charter entitled Canal View Off-Street Park in Improvement District.
Is this the assessment?
Yes. Do I hear a motion?
I don't think...
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item?
Results, city clerk be authorized, directed, advertised for public hearing to be held December fifteenth relative to proposed local law which would amend section four twenty-one F of the real property tax law.
Can I make a note there? First of all, it's not to amend section four twenty-one F, it's to adopt section four twenty-one F. Four twenty-one F is a state law, your state law, real property tax law. It was to adopt it?
To adopt it.
What this is, um, one of the arguments against improving property in the city, actually there are several. Item number one is you get hammered with billing permit fees when you show up to start and when you're done, immediately your assessment goes up. This section of the state tax law says that if you increase the value of your residential property, instead of paying more taxes right up front on the amount of your improvement, that that can phase in over time to kinda lessen the, the tax blow of an improvement. So it's something that we're gonna look at.
Five years or something like that?
I think it's at our discretion. But we're gonna look at that. We've got a legislative meeting Tuesday night and I just wanted to make sure that it, that public hearing was advertised enough ahead of time so that it can take place beginning January first.
Sounds like a good idea.
So, and I'll offer that.
Sounds good.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do I hear a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss pending litigation?
Move it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.